Just in case.
Um.
How are you?
You know, it was so sure, right? I mean, I just, I think it's so.
I really think part of it was we had some amazing things that made years and so on.
It did.
So I would say that that was.
You couldn't be textbook adoption up to eight.
Uh, no.
Uh, so, so my sister is a teacher at Waterloo Elementary and runs my hometown and basically the teachers have to report today. And they, um, let me tell you about the board meeting this week. Come on, hurry.
I went to a teacher.
Okay.
I heard my kids start, starts both morning.
M C capital C A U as, yeah, yeah, okay. Love you back. Yep, yeah, okay, love you. So the teachers had it today. They need consent on the plans. So everybody on the board can do.
Hi, that's it.
Sorry.
Join me this evening in a moment of silence. Thank you, and will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I should've said, "rise if you're able," that's what I should've said.
For our viewers, Kingsley is tied up, so he was not being disrespectful.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, um, I didn't actually ask anyone to read the mission statement this evening, so I would take a volunteer, or if you guys want me to, I'll just read it, it's up to you. Thank you, Aster.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the public hearing. The board of property is for our Devonshire site. And so I would like to bear with the public hearing open and ask that anyone here to address the board's senior and current Devonshire site. Do you please come forward, state your address, make your comments? All right, we're done. Um, I would personally motion to close the public hearing. Thank you, Sue, and a second. Thank you for our public hearing. Close the public hearing and approach the board of property Devonshire site. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Jesse. Any votes opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. The next item on our agenda is the information from individuals and delegations. And so I would ask if anyone has anything else besides the Devonshire site that they wish to address the board about this evening, that they come forward and state their name and address. Thin crowd for August, so we're on there. So, all right. With then, we will move on to our very lengthy consent agenda this evening. So I would ask that you bear with me because it does have, I believe, close to seventeen items on it this evening. The first is the minutes of the July fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, regular board meeting. The personnel appointments and adjustments, item C. Bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, item D. The donation from the Community Foundation of Northeast Iowa, item E. The Lou Henry Elementary Grant application to the Guernsey Foundation, item F. The USDA twenty nineteen Fresh Fruits and Vegetables Grant, item G. The twenty-eight E agreement with Dyke New Hartford School District and the Waterloo Community School District Waterloo Career Center, or WCC, item H. The twenty-eight E agreement with the Hudson School District and the Waterloo Community School District Waterloo Career Center, or WCC, item I. Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Northeast Iowa Memorandum of Understanding, or MOU, item J. The Tri-Carney Child and Family Development Council Incorporated Contracted Services Agreement, item K. The Vision to Learn Memorandum of Understanding, or MOU, item L. The District Developed Service Delivery Plan for Special Education, item M. The Textbook Adoption for High School Advanced Placement Chemistry, item N. The Textbook Adoption for High School Advanced Placement Music Theory, item O. The Textbook Adoption for High School Mathematics Department, item P. The Open Enrollment Appeal, item Q. And the Sale or Disposal of Real Property, item R. So with that, I would actually motion to put all of those on the table.
Some of.
Thank you, Sue, and thank you, Rhonda. And then I would ask, are there any items that board members wish to have removed from the consent agenda?
Items.
D as in dinosaur.
D as in dinosaur. Okay, thank you, Jesse.
Item C.
Item C.
And H and I, I just wanted to draw attention to that, so I don't know. Um, item F.
As in Frank?
Yes, sorry.
That's fine.
Item L.
And item L?
That's Larry.
Larry, Vision to Learn, okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so that leaves me with the following. Items B, E, G, J, K, M, N, O, P, Q, and R. Is that correct?
Yes.
Then, can I ask, all of those in favor of those following consent agenda items, would you please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Jesse. And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, those items carried. So that'll take us to item C, which is personnel appointments, and the recommended motion is the Board of Education approve the personnel items as listed.
Some move.
Thank you, Sue, and a second. All right, then, discussion.
Well, I just kinda wanted to get an update if possible on our staffing levels, how things are looking, and maybe our enrollment numbers so far, and staffing within the building, so that was.
So, we're looking pretty good, particularly at elementary. There's some secondary positions that, if you look on our job board, are kind of consistently rolling. We're trying to find some, um, some fill, especially for some of our, um, unfortunately, some of our core positions. So we're working through that part. I feel, I think last year, I was worried about our elementary positions, especially at certain schools. This year, I feel great about where we're at from an elementary standpoint. Now, the focus of the last, in the next two weeks, is really making sure that, um, we get some of those positions filled that have been just kinda rolling over the summer, that we've had one or one or two applicants and we haven't filled, filled those positions. English and math, right now, are the two positions that come to mind that have some openings at the secondary level. We really need to figure out what we're gonna do next. So, all the principals are kinda working on that Plan B.
And I will be abstaining from Exhibit C, just from a conflict, so.
Sue, was there anything else that I answered?
You did, you did also mention enrollment, just, uh, we, we actually are just, uh, working through the numbers from district registration. So if any parents or anybody listening to this can, um, make sure that you let us know if we can help you register. If you are a returning student, you can do the very, very simple online registration, which is pretty quick. I registered my own children that way. But if they need any help, they can come down, we have computers set up, they, we will walk them through it. If they prefer to do that in person, whatever, we can do. But, um, we don't really have enrollment numbers. We have really, truly, historically, had typically some late resignation, or late enrollments. So we'd really, really like to have everybody come down and let us help you to register.
Aye.
Thanks, Jesse. All right, the next item then is I have those two available and those two paid between board meetings. I'm sorry. And the recommended motion is the Board of Education approve the bills due and payable and the bills paid between board meetings. So move. Thank you, Sue, and a second. Thank you, India. And, uh, Jesse, I believe.
Yeah, I need to abstain on this, uh, item, please.
Okay, excellent. Are there any, is there any further discussion, or Jesse, do you have anything else to add on that?
No.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, then, seeing none, all those in favor of approving item D, please signify by saying aye. With one abstention, Director Knight?
Yeah.
And Chair votes aye, motion carried. The next item on our agenda, then, is item F, and this is the Lou Helly, Lou Henry Elementary Grant Application to the Guernsey Foundation. And that recommended motion is that, um, the Board of Education approve the application and acceptance of the grant from the Guernsey Foundation in the amount of twelve thousand dollars. So move. Thank you, Sue, and a second. Thank you, Aster. And discussion, and I know we've got some folks from Lou here tonight. Um, if anybody has questions?
I guess I pulled it, and I just wanted to hear a little bit, um, about, um, what's, what the application is and that kinda thing, if you would share that?
You guys gonna wrestle for it?
Yeah, come on up to the podium and.
Yes. No, Ms. Thomas is here, she's Lou's.
Newest Gold Star teacher.
Yeah, newest Gold Star teacher. Yay!
Um, the.
And I need Jen's back there, too. Um, will you guys make sure, because I just didn't do it myself, that the little green button is on, that you hit that push?
Down on the.
Yeah.
The green button is on.
Is it the light on?
Yes.
Sweet, then go.
The application is for, um, a buy-one-get-one-free, um, book fair that is held in May with Scholastic. And, uh, each child is given twenty-five dollars for, um, to go shopping. And it's based on a, a research, um, done by Dr. Richard Allington, that if you give kids choice in books, and they can shop for their own books, they have kind of a vested interest in it, and they'll wanna read those books, which they do. So we've had three years of data, one year was with, um, just one grade, and then the other two years, well.
Counting this year.
Counting this year, yeah. That we'll, we'll get data for when they come back, we'll test them on FAST again. Um, has been very encouraging, and looks like the program's working, so.
Last year, we, we use both, um, CBM from FAST and A-reading, um, and test K through, well, and K one, take early reading instead of CBM. But we test K through five in the spring, and then compare that to their fall results. And our data so far shows that, uh, around eighty percent, last year it was eighty-eight percent of our kids maintained or improved their reading levels over the summer.
And we had a thirteen percent increase in proficiency.
Super. See, this is what I wanted you to tell us, 'cause you should toot your horn, this is really exciting.
We are, we are proud of our kids.
Yeah, that's awesome.
And besides the support from Guernsey, I think it would be fair to also mention, not only you two, but also that Scholastic is, that this program is, you know, that they're, they're the ones who bring the books, right? But they, do they help financially?
No, no.
No, okay, then.
They do, they do a buy-one-get-one-free book fair, it's kind of open to anybody.
Okay.
Anybody could register for it, but it, um, is kind of their leftover inventory from the year, so.
Right, okay. But that one is open, the buy-one-get-one, anybody can use.
Anyone can use, but, but we, um, we, I have a relationship with Scholastic, they.
She's famous.
Well, my book fairs do pretty well, and so, uh, they are, they supplement that book fair.
Okay.
Quite extensively.
Great.
So we're giving, given a lot more books than would normally come with that.
Excellent.
So we don't run out, and kids are able to shop for what they want.
A great selection, then.
And we have Title I teachers in, and the classroom teachers in, to help, um, kinda with choices, make sure kids get the books that are appropriate for them to be reading.
Great.
And just, do you guys ever do anything, like with the recycling, like when they come back the next year, if they're, you know, 'cause I know my kids, I have bookshelves full of books that they read and they loved, but then they graduated on, and they're still in pristine shape, that, that they could go to somebody else. So I didn't know if you did any recycling with that, too?
I, kinda the beauty of this program, and, and part of the, I guess, appeal to the Guernsey Foundation, when we first went to them with this, is that we're building home libraries, and, um, access to literature isn't in every household, so. We kinda wanted to keep the books there for younger siblings to have access to if they're. Um, I do get books from time to time that parents will bring in, that I do put into circulation into the library if they're in good condition.
And we've done, um, like book exchanges with our family literacy night.
Perfect, great.
But, and I'm sure some of those coming back are, are from the buy-one-get-one-free, but we don't have that supported necessarily by the.
Yeah, no, that's awesome, that's awesome, great. Keep up the good work. I'll be excited to see, you'll be giving us the numbers for nineteen now, soon, next few months. Super, thank you very much, and thanks to the Guernsey Foundation for partnering with this.
Absolutely, yes, thank you to them.
Thank you both for coming up to the mic. Wait, we got one more question.
Sorry. I just had a, a, a quick question. So we're requesting, um, a twelve thousand dollar grant for all second graders at Lou Henry?
No, that is K five, twelve thousand supports K five. The first year, um, we were working with more limited funding, and so we only did second grade, um, aiming to improve our third grade reading proficiency.
Okay.
And then the last two years, um, two years ago, in two thousand eighteen, we kinda scraped together funding from a variety of sources, um, to do K five, and then Guernsey Foundation fully supported last year, for this summer with K five.
Awesome, so the twelve thousand is for K five?
Yep. It supports about five hundred kids, four hundred and ninety-four, I think, is what we ended with.
For eighty.
And they get fifty dollars, with the buy-one-get, they get basically fifty dollars worth of free books, so.
Thank you for your hard work. Yeah, thank you. Anything else for them? All right, then, all those in favor of approving the Lou Henry Elementary Grant Application to the Guernsey Foundation, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to item H, which is on page thirty. This is the twenty-eight, um, E agreement with, um, Dyke New Hartford. And the recommended motion is the Board of Education, uh, approve the twenty-eight E agreement between the Dyke New Hartford School District and the Waterloo Community Schools Waterloo Career Center as presented.
Second. And the only reason. The only reason I brought, um, H and I both up is, and you could probably piggyback I in there, too, is just that this is an exciting, you know, um, fruitation of our efforts with Dyke New Hartford and Hudson, and the collaborativeness, and how, um, our goal and our passion was to make the Career Center a regional. And I just think, um, that that's something our public should know, that, um, we have students from Hudson coming, Dyke New Hartford, and that collaboratively, I know we can use their ag programs if that is so, a choice of our students also. But that just, um, we are, um, making great, um, great strides out at the Career Center, besides just with our own students, but with other students, too, which was part of the vision and plan, so.
Yeah, I, I'm glad you, I'm actually really glad you pulled those. The, uh, when we built the Career Center, we just had a really strong feeling that people, it would draw. I think we even referenced the Field of Dreams, if you build it, they will come, and, and they, and they certainly have. And so, uh, this week, you're seeing a twenty-eight E agreement with Dyke New Hartford, and then you're also seeing, uh, in the next, the next item that you'll, will be before you, would be a twenty-eight E agreement with Hudson. We actually have two different types of, of, maybe for the public, this is helpful, but we actually have two different types of twenty-eight E agreements. One of them is just when, uh, students from a particular district can come to us, and they just tuition, they pay a tuition, uh, an amount, uh, to come in and take classes at the WCC. So that's kind of what I would define as a one-way agreement, where they, they come to us. But we also have a two-way reciprocal agreement, where we can have students attend their programming, and they can have students attend ours. And then the way the pay structure is, which you can see here, the pay structure is just that whoever has more attending, um, in their district, they just, we, there's a cost differential. They pay for the excess number. So if we have, let's say that we have five kids going to Hudson, and they have ten kids coming to us, then they pay for the differential of five, the five additional kids, at the rate that we've set. So, um, and, and it's four hundred and fifty dollars per child, per, per class, per semester, which is a pretty typical rate. That's about what it, what it costs to take the programming, it's a little bit more expensive out there, just because there's, there's more supplies and that kinda thing. So, and you can see for Hudson, uh, receiving our kids into the agriculture program, which is, is, is something that our kids could attend, it would be the same rate. So it's just for the differential. So, we are really excited, you'll see, um, actually, an agreement next week with Cedar Falls. So, which we've had in place for a, a while, but that will be another, uh, another agreement, so.
Just looking forward to maybe next fall or spring, having two or three more, maybe, you know, other districts, yeah.
We, we have had a couple open houses for the superintendents in the neighbor, uh, in the neighboring contiguous district, or contiguous, uh, districts. And so, and they have come, um, they're very interested, and it's probably a good time for us to host another one, because, especially with the completion of the building, uh, within the next week or two, I think they're gonna be completely done with everything on their punch list, and so we should probably have them come over and take a second look at it, to see if they'd want to, because we would be open to twenty-eight E agreements with districts that would like to share with us.
And plus the new programs that are going this fall.
Absolutely, with the four programs that are gonna launch, so, um.
And how, when you said pay, just for the public to make it clear, it's just district to district, there's no pay for.
No, the parents aren't paying, so the districts are, because the districts are receiving a certain amount of, uh, amount of money per child out of tax dollars. So, the P, I guess people are still paying in, in their taxes, but they're not paying, a parent is not paying for their child, so, yes.
That's all I have, thank you.
Not an open checkbook situation.
There's not, no check needs to be written, so it's just money exchanged from the districts.
Excellent. All right, is there anything further, then, on that, uh, first twenty-eight E? All right, then, all those in favor of approving the twenty-eight E agreement with Dyke New Hartford and the Waterloo School District, um, Waterloo Career Center, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. And item aye, do you want me to just go ahead and put it out there, are you good with that? Okay, is that the Board of Education approved the twenty-eight E agreement between the Hudson School District and the Waterloo Community School District Waterloo Career Center as presented. Thank you, Aster and Sue. And thank you, thank you, guys, you can wrestle for it. So, any discussion? All right, then, seeing none, all those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, oh, Jesse? Gotcha. And those opposed, same sign? All right, uh, Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us, then, to item L, which is the Vision, Vision to Learn Memorandum of Understanding. And, India, I think maybe you, um, pulled this, but I'm gonna put it out there, that the Board of Education enter into a memorandum of understanding with vision to learn as presented.
Yes, I did pull this, I just wanna say.
Can we, will you just say yes?
Yes, so move.
So, you put it on the floor, or somebody second it? All right, and discussion, go ahead, India.
Yes, sorry, thank you.
Excuse me, no, no.
Just wanted to acknowledge that this program is pretty amazing. I remember when Irving did this last year and the year before, and just seeing the smiles on the kids to be able to, see? To so, so I'll speak. So, um, I just wanted to acknowledge, thank you for this program, um, because it makes a huge difference when you're not squinting, or, you know, getting headaches. Yes, big thing, huge. Um, so, amazing program. Um, I don't know the schools that will be chosen just yet, 'cause I did read that they haven't chosen the schools, but whoever is, can participate in this, and, uh, teachers and the, um, counselors do a fantastic job choosing those students who will be able to receive those glasses. Great job.
Awesome.
And I could, I could actually give you an update, because there was just a recent meeting that we, uh, we have hammered out the details on that, so.
She's got it.
I do, um, and we are, we are really excited, just a teeny bit of background information, this is the program where they come and they screen all of the kids in a building, and then the students who may need glasses will be kinda flagged, and then they come with a mobile vision truck, and they have students get eye exams, and then, um, from that, they usually, then they will distribute glasses. They'll fit them for glasses right then and there, they have optometrists that come and volunteer, and they have grant money to do that, and the kids can get glasses, and it's taken care of right then and there. So, this is the exciting development, so they actually, they're, through their program, there are, um, they have some qualifying, uh, demographics that, um, students, or, particular schools can qualify. And so we had all of our schools qualify except for two schools. So they will actually be, uh, doing it on a two-year cycle, where they will do half of our buildings this year, and then the other half. And, here's the exciting part, from the two schools that didn't, uh, qualify, any students who are, who have a suspected vision issue, they can come over to those, and they can get glasses. So basically, this is district-wide, so it's really a great thing.
Wow, that's cool.
And a lot of, you know, a lot of parents, if they have, if they're under the care of a eye doctor, and they wanna continue that, they absolutely can pass. This is not a requirement by any means, they can just, they opt out, they just sign, hey, we're not, you know, I have one son who wears glasses, and, and he, you know, he'll probably continue doing his thing, and so I'll probably, you know, sign that, but you don't have to. You can, you can opt in, opt out, whatever you want, and it's really a great program. And it's all through grant dollars that this, this organization, um, secures on our behalf.
Nice, nice.
It was very popular, and they had a lot of grant, uh, funders who approached them about funding this particular thing and expanding it, so we're really excited about that.
That is very exciting, so, thank you, for all those who have participated in this, so, absolutely.
And this is also part of the campaign for grade-level reading, so it's a, it's a statewide initiative, which is great, and then it also is involving other people in the community, which I think is a really great thing, too, so. And the fact that it's gonna now reach, within two years, every single one of our kiddos that, you know, wanna be screened, is huge, so. All right, anything further? All right, then, all those in favor of approving the Vision to Learn Memorandum of Understanding, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Jesse, and those opposed, same sign? Chair votes aye, motion carried. Okay, so we got through the consent agenda pretty, pretty well, that's okay, for all those. So the next item on our agenda, then, is item S, and these are the board policy changes. This is a second reading for them this evening, and there are three different policies, four oh three point six, four oh eight point seven two, and five oh seven point six. And so I will ask Tara Thomas, our Director of School and Community Relations, to come forward and give us a little more info, if anybody has questions. Thank you, Shanley, and I can take any questions or comments. Anybody have any questions? Can we put this item on the table, please? Thank you, Sue, and a second?
Second.
Second. Well, we, I thought we might, so I was, I just hadn't gotten to it yet, so, okay. Then, all those in favor of approving those three board policy changes, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those. Those opposed, same sign? Chair votes aye, motion carried. Um, the next item on our agenda, then, is the superintendent's contract, and I will, um, pull that up. Of course, I moved my cursor, and now I can't find it. Oh, yeah. Do you wanna just take them out of order for a minute? Yeah, that's fine. No, we'll just, oh, yeah, so here, um, all right, so let's go to, let's move to item T, which is on page ninety-four. And that is, um, the, um, item U, pardon me. Okay, nope, all right, so, we're, that's all right. So we, um, anyway, so these, we're gonna move on to item, uh, it says, it's item U, which is on page ninety-five, which is our, um, Iowa School Board Association Legislative Action Priorities. And every year, we're asked to put together, as a board, and in conjunction with our superintendent, um, some resolutions that we feel are particularly important. Most of what IASB advocates for is helpful to all of us on the school board. But in particular, we have four resolutions, and we would like to add one more, um, to our list. And, and IASB really recognizes that districts may have specific ones that they wanna add. And so before we get to the four that are on here, I'm also gonna read, uh, a fifth one that we would like to add for, um, in particular, because of our district and some of the, some of the things that we have going on here in, um, our diverse district. And so that, that resolution is for cultural responsiveness. And item A is that it supports the certification and licensure requirements that include a focus on equity and cultural responsiveness within our professional teaching standards. Item B is to support efforts that ensure principals and teachers have professional development opportunities to help them strengthen their cultural competency, including assessing their own cultural viewpoints and biases, setting high expectations for all students, acknowledging diverse learning styles, using culturally responsive pedagogy, and effectively engaging diverse families and community members. Item C, then, is to support additional funding for programs designed to create inclusive and culturally and linguistically responsible classrooms in school environments that address the social, emotional, and academic needs of students. And then D is to support adequate resources to recruit, prepare, support, retain, and encourage individuals from diverse populations to enter the teaching and school leadership professions, including funding programs that provide career ladders and financial assistant opportunities to encourage and support paraprofessionals, educational aides, after-school staff, and other district staff to become teachers. to encourage and support paraprofessionals, educational aides, after-school staff, and other district staff to become teachers. For example, our Teach Waterloo program. To provide funding and technical assistance for high schools, to implement teacher cadet programs, concurrent enrollment programs, and curriculum designed to encourage students of color to explore the teaching profession as a valuable career choice, a viable, excuse me, and then encouraging teacher preparation programs to create degree articulation agreements with community colleges that offer two-year degrees. So thank you for putting up with me, but that wasn't in our actual board documents, so, um, and that will just be added, and we will just, um, take that to IASB when our delegates meet in the fall. So, um, with that, is there any other discussion on any of those other, um, you know, some of the things we've talked about, where alternative licensure ship, um, teacher leadership and development, mental health, and then early literacy are our other priorities. And as I said, there's lots of priorities that IASB covers, it's not really saying that those others aren't important, it's just saying, these in particular are important to our district.
Right. I just wanted to add that the I, IASB stands for the Iowa Association of School Boards. And we have a, an advocacy, legislative advocacy, uh, branch of the IASB, where each school district, uh, recommends certain legislative priorities to our policymakers in Des Moines. So we want for the community to know that, um, these are the legislative priority, priorities that we as a school board identified. But we very much appreciate any input from our parents and our students and the community about those things they identify as, as important. When we talk about legislative priorities, that means that when we go to the State House, we talk to our legislatures, legislators about funding some of these things. So I'm proud to say that, as a district, we're already doing some really awesome things here in Waterloo. We would just like to see maybe additional funding attached to it, so that's the purpose of this.
Thanks, Rhonda, and thank you for, um, putting, taking the time and effort to put that together, so. Sue, India, Aster, anything else? Alright, so then the recommended motion will be that the Board of Education approve as its top priorities for the 2019 session of the General Assembly, the following resolutions, number four, early literacy, number seven, mental health, number twelve, teacher leadership and development, and number fifteen, alternative licensure, with the addition of, uh, cultural, yeah, with the addition of cultural responsiveness to the, to our list of priorities.
So moved.
That's second.
Thank you all, and all those in favor then of the recommended motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, and those opposed, same sign? Chair votes aye, motion carried. Alright, sorry, now we're gonna go back to item T, pardon me there, I got a little out of order, so, I don't know where I am half the time, so, alright, here we go. And the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education renew the superintendent's contract through June thirtieth of 2022 with commensurate salary and pay-per-performance compensation. Thank you, Sue, in a second?
Second.
Thank you, and discussion, um, I, I'm just gonna start by saying that we had our initial review with Dr. Lindeman back in June. Um, it was highly positive, in fact, I would argue, Jane, that it was probably the best review you've had. Um, very, not that you've had bad ones, but just that it was the most positive. Very constructive, very, very good, and so we have waited until August, because we have a set of metrics. Dr. Lindeman is the only superintendent in the state of Iowa who is paid by, um, paid out, her increase in salary is not based on a percentage, it is based on a percentage of metrics. So it's a pay-per-performance scale, um, which I think is very brave of all of us to have entered into this agreement together five years ago. Um, and as that has moved forward, um, every year Jane has been compensated based on the number of those metrics that have been met. And I am proud to say that this evening, that sixty-six percent of our metrics were met this year. And so the, uh, commensurate salary and increase is very much deserved, and, um, I can let the rest of the board talk about that a little bit more, but that's where that's all coming from, so. Yeah.
Well, I guess I, I wanted to speak some to the fact that, um, I was one of the three original people when we started the pay-for-metrics back with Dr. Gary Norris, and, um, at that time when I was on the board, multiple people would say to me, well, why do they just get a percentage raise, why do they just get a percentage wa, raise? So then that was a thought in my head, and then, um, we did form this committee, and, um, Dr. Norris was, um, innovative with Lyle, um, and Andrea Sparks were the three that we met and came up with the first, um, pay-for-performance with Dr. Norris. Then he left, and we hired Jane, and in hiring Jane, she was, um, intrigued and thought that this was kind of a unique way, and she's actually, um, kind of a, driven by statistics and data and Excel spreadsheet, so this was like a really, um, really up her alley, and just to see, um, the increases and the gains, and sometimes, um, not so much gains, you know, over the five years, we have seen things very flat, things, we, and in the process, we do change the metrics, we refine the metrics yearly, we look at them, we determine if a metric, and this is through other staff members, um, included in this, that, you know, if this metric is positive, if this metric is, what we need to do to evaluate effectively, is it a, a system that maybe isn't useful? So we do change those often, because we cannot just base, um, base the performance on a test score, we just can't do that, because that's just, uh, part of the job, a very important part of the job, but it is just a part of the job, there's so many other things. And so we even included it to community things, and trying to make it, as we do in our IB program, a very well-rounded, um, superintendent, not just driven by data, or not just driven by community, but a well-rounded superintendent, which I think Jane does an excellent job of, um, Dr. Lindeman doing. And also, I do believe too, that, um, in, whenever we come around to raises, people always balk at raises, and nobody likes to talk about raises, as does Dr. Lindeman, but, um, um, if people look up what it takes to be a superintendent, as far as the education, just that in itself, um, disqualifies a lot of people, um, lots of positions, you, masters, doctorate, PhD, to be a superintendent. And, and that, um, removes a lot of people even from that running, plus the experience. And, um, so I sit here tonight, saying after five years of our metric system, that I would never apologize for increasing our goals, and meeting our goals, and going beyond our goals, and every penny that, um, is attached to this, um, Dr. Lindeman deserves, so.
I forgot to turn my mic back on. India, anybody else? No. I just wanna add too, um, you know, when we talk about five years, it's pretty amazing, when Dr. Lindeman started, Dr. Lindeman didn't have, um, any experience. She was the first person that we hired in this job, and she was, um, you know, it was, it was her first superintendency, I guess is what I should say. And so as we talk about salary, and sometimes that does make us a little uncomfortable at times, I think it's also important to remember where Waterloo looks and is within our peers, within our peer groups, within other UEN organizations, and how you're commensurately paid. And so, um, I just ask our public to look at those figures as well, when they, when they look to how you're paid and your compensation, because I completely a hundred percent agree with Sue, that you're worth every penny of that, and that, um, still on this level, you're still, we still have work to do to get you where you need to be, to even more, be even more competitive with the largest school districts, with, with the most students and the most staff in the UEN and the state of Iowa, so.
I'd just like to say, when it comes to valuing our educators, a lot of times our salaries are our moral document. And so I think it is critical for us to consider certain things, um, in terms of how we pay our teachers, how we pay our paraprofessionals, and also how we pay our superintendent. I recognize that when, when we're talking about six-figure salaries in a place where most people don't earn that, it could be a cause for contentiousness, or confusion, or what have you. But I just hope that for those individuals who voted us into, into these seats, into these offices, that, uh, you find consolation in knowing that we've taken all things into consideration, and, um, that's all I wanna say.
Great. Thanks, Rhonda.
And, and as you brought up the comparative to the other districts, but I think with our unique pay-for-performance, it's very difficult to keep you on a comparative level with them, because we, you have to make gains to get a higher level, as they're all going just a percent raise. And so it, it, it does bring a quandary into that, and, and as Shanley said, which, we were behind the cue ball when we started this, because you were brought in with zero experience, and Gary Norris had, what, twenty-five years' experience? So there was a variance there when we started going to the pay-for-performance, so you had been an associate superintendent, and we wanted you for the job. So I just think that even on your standalone, you far succeed all the other superintendents.
But it's so much, it's so much deep, deeper than that for me, because, um, as a representative for the state with the school board, when I look at the number of students we serve, our demographics, um, oh my stars, um, things such as our, um, racial, uh, demographics, our English language learners, um, the number of our students with special needs, the number of buildings that Dr. Lindeman has to supervise, the number of staff that we have. So when you look across the district, how, how many districts are there in the state, I don't remember?
I think there's about three-hundred-and-twenty, or three, three-thirty somewhere near, it changes as, as different districts.
So, yes, there's a lot more consolidation.
So for me, it's, it's, it's a lot deeper than who deserves something, because the reality is, no one individual deserves, uh, a, a salary just, you know, for that position. But we need to look at who we're serving, and why we're here, and, and again, that salary is our moral document, and it shows our commitment to how we serve our students. And so, you know, I just wanted to say that. And, and thank you for a lot of your hard work, and thank you for working with us too.
My pleasure.
Yeah.
I'll just end with, um, I'm really hoping the document that you provided for us, so publicly you can, people can see the work that has been done. Seeing the numbers, you know, you're a numbers person, so it, it's provided, um, so I do hope that the public will see visually what we've done in our district, which is pretty amazing.
It's a great story to tell.
It is a great story to tell, so our, as a person who's not from Waterloo, have, have been here for a while now, it's very impressive to be part of this community, and to say, like, we've done some big things, and so, they, everybody should be pretty proud, so, thank you.
And on this form here, Jane, that we got the district name, and, um, it, that surprises me slightly that Rhonda brought that up, fifty-six percent free and reduced, I thought we were higher than that.
So this, this document uses, um, for districts that are CEP, which stands for Community Eligibility Provision. Um, so if districts have the, where all students eat free breakfast, free lunch, that is, so that is what they call a direct certification number, so it is a little bit different. So, because, so that will change now, as we, uh, anybody who registered their children know that there was one question on there that was called an economic survey, so it just, you know, basically it's just asking, because you don't fill out a free and reduced form anymore. Um, so on that question, we base that now, so, but we hadn't done that in the past, so this is just a direct certification. So it actually, we run about sixty-eight to sixty-nine percent free and reduced as a district. There are many buildings that are more, and some buildings that are less, uh, but that, that number is actually, because we're CEP, Community Eligibility Provision. Or, is it provision, is that the right word? Yeah, provision, um, because of that, that number actually, this particular year, doesn't mean anything right now. So it's, it's about seventy, just shy of seventy percent.
I will say something if I can.
Yes, Aster.
So at this time last year, I probably was the least comfortable. Not necessarily approving this, but just didn't understand, uh, what, what went on to make the raise. Um, and I wanna say thank you to Dr. Lindeman, to Shanley, Sue, Lau, um, for explaining it in a way, um, over the course of time, that made myself and the rest of the board, I think, a little bit more comfortable, uh, with how we reach, um, what we got, and I do think is, uh, deserved, well-deserved. So, I just wanted to say that, so thank you.
Thanks, Aster, and I think that goes back to, I think we had in June, a particularly good exchange between all of us as board members with our superintendent, and we're really able to have a, you know, that review, part of that great process was the fact that we were all able to sit together and really look at our goals, where everybody kinda understood where we were all coming from, I think that really mattered as well, so. Alright, Jessie, you all good? Can you hear me? I might have lost it.
All good.
Okay, I was like, I couldn't tell if I lost you or not, so, yeah, he might be, he might have me on mute, so. Alright, with that, um, let us go ahead and take vote, all those in favor of approving, um, the superintendent's contract, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, same sign? Chair votes aye, motion carried. Sorry, I have a frog in my throat. I do. Alright. The next item on our agenda then is that, um, the Board of Education approve the quote recommended by the District Insurance Company to participate in the IASB Safety Group Plan with a total estimated premium of one million, three-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand dollars and four, three-hundred-and-seventy-two, hundred, four dollars as presented. Thanks, Sue, in a second?
Second.
Alrighty, and discussion, I can turn this over to Michael Coughlin, if he wants to answer any questions that the board might have. Policies written out here, and?
Well, I can talk about the first part just a moment, and then Kingsley, I'll hand it over to you for workers' comp.
Great.
Part.
Okay.
The property liability section of the, uh, insurance, and first of all, I just wanted to say that this is recommended through an insurance committee that the district has, and we do, um, examine the options that are out there every year. But we have been with Employers Mutual for quite a number of years, which is, uh, the same case as the vast majority of all the districts in Iowa, um, because they do serve schools, uh, very well. But it is different this year in the fact that, uh, rates have gone up, and I think if we look back, uh, almost to ten years, that it has gone down every year in that time period. And, uh, Chris Faraday, who is the president of PDCM, came in and, uh, met with board members and, uh, staff, and answered some questions, and talked about the rate increase, uh, it really was a national trend. And EMC, because of the loss, uh, structure over the last couple of years, and, um, EMC took the position that they were gonna raise the property insurance, uh, to every client by ten percent, so it was across the board. Uh, then also, uh, there was about a three percent increase on our property insurance purely because of building WCC. Uh, the property and the equipment that went in it, so when you, uh, add those two automatics together of thirteen percent, as you see on page one oh six at the top right-hand corner, um, by the time we get through all of the different factions of the property and liability coverage, uh, it netted out at nine-point-four-one percent. So even with a thirteen percent increase, the rest of our, uh, the rest of the areas within the insurance brought it down, um, below that thirteen percent, uh, range, so the nine-point-four-one was the increase that we had for property liability casualty automotive, uh, coverage. So, the other part of that policy, um, is the workers' comp.
Yeah, from a workers' comp standpoint, you know, we've been blessed in a sense to work with PDCM, and, and them to provide us especially, um, for this last year, moving into this year, a comprehensive plan of how we need to move forward, in a more, I would say, intensive way to ensure that, um, we're meeting the needs of our staff. I mean, I think that's ultimately what we're focusing on. Uh, workers' comp, just for the public's regulation, and obviously your regulation as well, is not only focused on, you know, staff injury, while it be that maybe staff injury to student, but it's also focused on, you know, just falls, um, you know, um, running into doors, unfortunately, I mean, it is, it, I'm, I'm not trying to poke fun, I just mean it is a vast, uh, majority of things that would happen. My leg injury isn't actually one of those things that fell under workers' comp, 'cause it happened outside of work, but ultimately, um, it is a vast, uh, network of things, uh, making sure that we're appro- But ultimately, it is a vast network of things, making sure that we're appropriately using ladders when we're moving picture frames or things from the walls or posters from the walls. And so we have a comprehensive plan moving forward. We're going to be very aggressive, and Michael knows this as well, we're going to be very aggressive in how we move forward with that particular plan to ensure that we're, we're not only obviously doing better from a workers' comp standpoint moving into next year, but, you know, I want to be the best in the state. I want to make sure our numbers are indicative of, you know, the top leaders in the state as far as how we address workers' comp. And so that's part of the dialogue and conversation as we move forward. And hopefully we'll provide you with updates throughout the year as far as the, the gains that we've made.
Well, and I just wanted to say it was very helpful to have PDCM come and explain these things to us. I thought that that was extremely helpful. So thank you for that and arranging that. And I appreciate that. And just as you had mentioned that, just a question then, if you had a building of basically new schools, would it be more costly then? I mean, because I know like the WCC and maybe that's in a question I should have asked us Faraday. But as far as because the value's higher because it's newer or is it harder to insure old buildings? This is a question I just thought of.
Yeah, it's a trick question. But it's kind of like insuring an automobile. Of course, you know, a newer, newer vehicle, upkeep, replacement, repairs are going to be more expensive than finding a used part for an old, for something older. But when you talk about older buildings, as we know, that when there is an issue, it not only is to fix the damage, but to bring it back up to code. So it's a mixture of both situations with that. And that's why it's a difficult, because we look at property values every year of all the buildings that we have and saying, is it adequately valued for the structure itself plus the contents within it? So that's something that we annually look at and, and usually to up that limit is not very expensive. So that's, it's a good value for your dollar for the, for the insurance. So we have been pretty aggressive with that over the years to make sure we have enough if something happens.
Thank you. Are there any more questions for Mr. Coughlin on, or Mr. Bachway? If you have one? All right. Then seeing none, all those in favor of approving the property casualty and workers' compensation insurance program, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That was our last item on our, for action item anyway. So I will move on then to our superintendent's report with Dr. Lindeman.
Yeah, just short and sweet tonight. First of all, I just want to thank the board for your confidence in me and for extending my contract. I have been very open that I absolutely love what I do, even though I wasn't sure that I wanted to do it. I want, you know, I've been doing, this is my fifth, end of my fifth year as a superintendent and starting into the sixth year. And it has really been a privilege to, to serve Waterloo schools and, and our students. So, and our families and communities. So I really, really appreciate the vote of confidence. And it's, it obviously takes a huge team. We have many of them sitting up here. It takes a lot of us to, to do it. And, and while it is absolutely not easy, I wouldn't even pretend that it's easy. It is not. And it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be easy. So very, very appreciative of that. I would just remind everybody that we are gearing up for, we are working fast and furiously on preparing for the, the launch of the school year. Tara has been sharing out and will be sharing out even more. The, the first day of school is August 26th. And we are starting on a Monday as is meant, as are many of the districts around here. So we're looking forward to that. There's so much that happens behind the scenes. We're working on transportation. We're working on food service. Matter of fact, for the next three days, all of our administrators and all of our leaders in the, in the district are in training and professional development to really hone in on some of the logistics to be ready for kids to come back to school, but also to sharpen our saws and be ready for some of the work we're doing in, you know, math and literacy and closing the achievement gap is a huge, a huge area that we're working on this year too. So. And then I think the, the final comment I would make is that because this is, the signal's the end of my five years, it actually also signals the closure of our first five-year strategic plan. And so we are continuing to work on closing that out, but also getting ready to launch our new one. And strategic plans don't just magically happen. And I think when they magically happen, they're not a very good document. So we actually have laid out, it's a six-month process from start to finish to actually review our, our previous five-year strategic plan and to launch our new and to, to write and develop our new strategic plan. So we're about three months into that right now. Actually, we had all of the administrators today go through a multiple-hour exercise where we really looked at what needs to be accomplished in the areas of PACE, P-A-C-E, which is people, achievement, community, and environment, which I know I've said a billion times. But anyway, we are working through that strategic plan. As we go forward, even in after Labor Day, we will be continuing to hear from people. We have a process that we use where we do some brainstorming and then we review each other's, each other's work and compile them into the bigger, broader documents. So I'm really excited. I think our process to secure this strategic plan is actually even better than the one that we used five years ago. I think we know more now. And it doesn't help that I have some years under my belt as well. So it's just really a, a great thing. And I think the community can look forward to seeing our plan on a page. And, you know, clearly it's going to be more than just one page, but we'll, we'll be doing an at-a-glance document as we go forward. But we've still got multiple months to kind of secure what that's going to look like. So we, we plan the work and then we work the plan. So, exciting times ahead.
Thanks, Dr. Lindeman. All right, I'm going to start down here with Ms. India tonight for board comments.
Don't have anything.
All right. Jesse, you have anything from afar?
It's hot in Georgia, if it matters.
It's just sticky here, not, not as hot. So, all right. Eat some gumbo, will you? No. Okay, Sue, go.
Well, and I too just wanted to also, besides with Jane, I just, the staff with, I, Stephanie, Dr., you know, your official titles, I won't go through all that, Michael, but and Tara, and just the great support team that you have around you that also really works for the kids of this district and, and fortifies your work and, and you fortify their work. So I, I want to thank all of them and the ones that are not here too that play, Pam, you too, that play a huge role in that. And also I just, you know, we've had some, and Dr. Lindeman mentioned, you know, the training and we're, we're getting everybody on board and training. But I just want to assure our public that we are diligently working with the buses. And we are going to really, really hope to far succeed your expectations of the busing. And, and I do, one time someone had said to me, as far as when you fly, a good time to fly is right after, and this is not, I'm just saying, I was told this, but a good time to fly is right after a crash because they're more sensitive to every safety issue. So we've had some issues. So I really believe this is going to be our best busing year. We are working on efforts to just make that experience better for students and, and not scary for parents. So, thank you.
Thanks, Sue. Rhonda?
I just wanted everyone to participate or, or in, support the KBBG parade that's coming up this Saturday. A number of our students and staff will be in that parade. So that and the Northeast, Northeast End Fest and the Take Back Our Communities, which is very important. They do a lot of awesome community service for our kiddos, is what we call them. So again, be on the lookout for those. I think the parade starts at 10.
10, I was going to say.
Yeah, the parade starts at 10. So if you get an opportunity, please come out and support.
I bet she stole yours, Esther. I'm looking at your face.
Right in order. I'm going to go ahead and cross those off. That's fine. This past weekend was a pretty eventful weekend for me. I do want to acknowledge Mr. Dan Huff, Ms. Laura Leetack, Dr. Pappas, Brendan Shavers, and also a former NFL player, Marte Jenkins. I had an opportunity to attend the Waterloo Coaches Academy on Saturday. And I didn't get, get a chance to see all of it. And I did see Shan Lee out there as well.
I'm not a coach, I just like to.
But it, but it was, it was absolutely amazing. Not just the, not just the building that it was housed in, but some of the information and just seeing those coaches interact with each other, the presentations. And I, I was joking with Shan Lee earlier, if the presentations that happened earlier in the day were anything like those that happened after lunch, I mean, it was amazing. Everybody did an awesome job organizing it, getting everybody together. And all the speakers were amazing. So I just want to give kudos to those people. Continue to doing what you're doing. You're making us all look good. So, thank you.
Awesome. I thought Jim Miller was going to jump, you know, he would get so excited and he'd jump. It was great.
I didn't catch Mr. Miller, but I have seen him present before.
Yep, he's pretty good.
I didn't get there till after lunch. I did go to the Skills Academy. I could say a little bit about that. I got out there roughly about 11 o'clock. And I want to say it was roughly about 50, 50 to 55 kids ages seven through 17, quite a few volunteers, enough help. So, I mean, it was a, a, amazing Saturday for me and the community as well. So just, it was awesome.
Okay, keeping with athletics in mind, I just want to point out that Esther and Rhonda and I last Wednesday, and Dr. Lindeman, attended the re, the relaunching of the.
Recalibration.
The recalibration, the relaunch of the East High, the Trojan United Booster Club. And it was awesome. And there were, there were between 40 and 50 people there.
Actually, it was almost 60.
Almost 60 people there, yes.
We counted, yes.
See, I was in the back, I wasn't paying attention. I was just.
It was a lot.
Happy that there was just a great group. And I, and I just want to say, if you're interested in being part of that, whether you, however deep you want to go, however much you want to volunteer, you can reach out to, I don't know when the next meeting is. That's what I'm.
Yeah, we actually are going to set, tomorrow is the day we're going to publish that. I would say it right now, but I just wanted to double check one thing. But tomorrow the date comes out of the, the actual relaunch meeting.
And where can people look for that?
Uh, we'll have Tara shoot that out. But anybody who was at the meeting got, we captured their email addresses. So we've been communicating with that as a group. So we sent them out the minutes of the meeting on Friday. And so we'll be sending that out tomorrow so they can get it on their calendars. It's not until later. So it's not this week. But it's, we want to give them, you know, as much notice as possible so they can get it on their calendars. So.
Great. It was just a really cool thing. So I just want to say that it is overdue and it's exciting times for going on at East High. So.
And next time, India and I want to go because you three went last night.
Yeah, right.
Right.
It was, it was amazing. It was.
Real quick, Shan Lee, I have some times for, so the Take Back Our Community event will be hosted at Sullivan Park, starting at 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And the KBBG parade starts at 10:00 AM. And it culminates at Ferguson this year. So Ferguson Field with the Northeast Arts Festival shortly after, at Ferguson. So it'll be a full day next Saturday.
Thanks, Esther. Yeah.
And they'll also be giving away backpacks with school supplies, I believe.
They will.
So.
Which is another thing we should do is thank the J.C.'s and, and their, the workers who packed. Tara did, did a great job of covering that. But I believe they had a thousand backpacks. And on social media, there's really great pictures of it. They're really quite heartwarming. So extra thanks to them too, to making, to make sure that our families get some needed supplies.
They did an awesome job. I went on Thursday and helped, helped sack stuff. And they were so organized. They had every supply. They had stations. They had more volunteers. And I mean, they, they were able to plow through a thousand in, in a couple of days. So the J.C.'s deserve huge kudos. And, you know, they took that over and it's great that O.R.S. has.
It was excellent.
They, you know, transitioned that and that we're still going to make that happen.
And that, that's, they'll be handed out Saturday? Is that?
And next week.
And next week.
People have to sign up for that.
Thursday? Is that what you're saying?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
I think, that's right.
Yeah, how did they sign up for that? Or they already had?
They did, already signed up.
They did, already signed up.
They signed up, we had publicized days. And so they actually signed up here in the lobby. So those, and those people would have, they would have gotten a little note.
A note about it.
We, we are getting a few calls from people asking about supplies where they can get them. And I know, I, I go to Take Back Our Community every year and they always have a lot of backpacks. And so there are a lot of organizations that are still giving away backpacks. And so there's, they're still out there. If people need some, some help, they can contact their school or they can contact the, you know, sometimes there's churches and other organizations that are doing it as well.
Yeah, noon to seven on the 15th.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then just the last thing I want to say, we talked about the start of school. And Sue, I think you've said it all the time, that just for our drivers and people who are out and about to take an extra minute when you're driving behind a bus or when kids are at a bus stop or kids are crossing the street, just remember, a lot of our kids are already back at practices. They're in band camp, they're doing stuff. And so just slow down, take, take your, pay attention to what's happening because our kiddos are going to be out and about within a couple of weeks, as will our buses. So, first day of school is the 26th. And that is in fact, the day of our next board meeting as well, right back here in this room. So if there is nothing further, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Sue, in a second. India, all right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. We are adjourned. Thanks, Jesse. Have a good one. Hope you get home soon. We're adjourned.